So I count six mayor, we know that Dave isn't going to be here tonight. So we're still waiting for Raul and we'll give him a minute or so and then we can get rolling. And I see we've got Quincy there, but we don't have video. I'm sure he'll be on in a moment as well.
Yeah, I'm here. I'm trying to get my video to work.
Eating.
He is eating.
Good Holly.
Yeah.
Oh, I just got the blue spinny circle. I don't know what's going on. Give it a second.
We have anybody else trying to get in Matt?
No, not anybody else.
All right. Well, let's, let's get started because my clock says 5:32. This is the city of Holland, city council study session for February 10, 2021. We start all of our meetings with public comment. If any member of the public would like to address council, this is their opportunity to do that. We do limit that to three minutes during our study session times. You'll need to keep track of that time on your end. Our assistant city manager, Matt Ben Dyken will be keeping track of time on his end as well. And he'll mute your microphone when you hit the three minute mark. We do ask that you state your name and address for the record. And also please remember that this is one way communication. This is an opportunity for you to speak to council, but we do not answer questions or engage in discussion during this time period. So with that being said, is there anyone here who would like to address council at this time? And I see Doug Zylstra. Good evening, Doug. We'll get you unmuted.
My muted?
You are unmuted. Welcome and please state your name and address for the record.
Okay, thank you. Doug Zalstra, 152 East 24th Street, Ottawa County Commissioner for the City of Holland. I just want to give a quick vaccine update. Ottawa County is currently seeing a diminished level of coronavirus cases as measured by a variety of metrics. Our case positivity is near 5%. Testing is remaining stable at eight to 9,000 tests per week. Cases per million is 107.1. Our current cases are averaging 43 cases per day. These are all something we've not seen since early fall. So I think that, you know, a very positive development regarding vaccines. Ottawa County has been shipped 31,625 doses so far. The health department has achieved about 13,000 and area hospitals are through the other 18,000. Ottawa County residents have been administered 42,000 doses. So there's about 10,000 Ottawa County residents who've been going outside the county. Mainly imagine center to get vaccinated. So that's, that's positive. We're not getting the doses that we would like, but we're still getting some decent vaccination. So this week we're receiving 975 doses of Pfizer, 700 of Moderna. Here in Holland, we're partnering with St. Francis for 250 doses tomorrow on Friday. This is a very welcome development as the sexual vaccination of the targeted population at St. Francis will hopefully help us increase our current vaccination rate of 7% of non-white folks aged 65 and older. Couple of quick reminders, there are 20,000 folks on the current phase list, the 1B phase. So if we're getting 2,000 doses per week, obviously you can do the math on that. Hopefully we get our doses up. But there are a lot of folks on that list and they're wondering if they're still, they're still on there. Obviously, we're going to take the time to go through that list, but just rest assured that you are on the list and we will get to you when we have the doses for you. There are a variety of vaccine lists out there, the new list from Myers. Residents, please value yourself for those lists, but just note that the lists don't talk to each other. So if you're on one, they, the list does not know where you are and you may be vaccinated. So go from there. Any other further questions, please email me at desalstra@myado.org.
Great. Thank you, Doug. Appreciate it.
Very much. Appreciate it, Mr. Mayor.
Is anyone else here that would like to address council? Seeing none and Matt, we don't have anybody waiting to get in, correct? No. All right. Then I will close the public comment period and we'll move on to our next item, housing update. This is one of a number of study sessions that city council had asked staff to put together and the major issues that, that came out of our advance this year. And the first one is housing. I'm going to turn it over to city manager Keith Van Beek. Keith?
Yes. Good evening, everyone. Still on the dreaded Zoom. So just if you're wondering, we're still monitoring everything from the state. And as soon as we have the ability to kind of go back to what I think was a very successful and very safe way to have our meetings for most of 2020 in council chambers will do that. But at that point, at this point, that's not an option available to us yet. And just, it just reminded me again, you know, Zoom is okay, but it's just not the same, is it? So just a little added something that you know that, that we're always monitoring that and we'll move back to that when able. Yes, Mayor Council, this is, we, we had a handful of different items that we were going to come back at your request and provide study sessions items on. I'm sorry, last week I kind of said, man, I don't know if we're going to have one of them available for next week, but it actually broke in such a way where Ryan was available and we could hit this.
Keith froze on us and did Matt, did you freeze on us as well?
Yeah.
Is that just for me?
On their back.
Oh, they're back. Good.
Oh, sorry. I cut out. So we're going to go from the broad down to the very narrow. We'll see, I'm still not sure kind of the timing with budgets and everything, when we're going to have our next sessions available. So I'll keep you updated on that if, if we have one later in March or not. One thing I want to be very clear before I hand it off to Ryan. And Ryan, I'm not even sure if you've made a presentation to council yet after we cemented our relationship with Housing Next through United Way that you're a contractual employee for the city or not. Have you presented to council since, since that point?
No, not since we formalized a contract.
Okay. So one of the things that I think is really important, and you might get sick of me doing this a little bit, but I'm going to set up Ryan every time to make clear that you all understand and anyone that's viewing the meeting also understands what, what hat he's wearing when he's talking to you. And tonight, Ryan is wearing whatever color hat you want to call it of Housing Next. Okay? So he is still absolutely the director, executive director of Housing Next and he can maybe, maybe I'll have him.
But my back again. Yep, you're back.
Sorry. So he's wearing whatever color hat that is that Housing Next. When he works for the city, he's got those two broad areas of responsibility again, right? Economic development and sustainability. And part of what that means is Ryan is a resource, but Ryan doesn't have decision-making power on the third floor. So when it comes to community and neighborhood services or housing or planning or zoning or all those types of things, that's Mark and Jenna and crew. Ryan, you know, when he talks about housing, it's housing next. So I just want to be clear that, and you'll probably see more of that because it is a little bit interesting. So we want to make sure that all of you, but anyone watching too, kind of knows what, what role Ryan is playing when, when he speaks to us. And if you have questions that let me, let me know. But tonight, Ryan is executive director of Housing Next. So with that, I think Ryan's going to do a presentation. Mark's going to jump in when we talk about Holland, City of Holland specific information, and then it's going to dovetail back to Ryan. And in the Zoom setting, both of those guys know that Matt is manning, manning the Ford in the backward of the PowerPoint. So Ryan, why don't you take it away, Housing Next Director?
Awesome. Thank you, Keith. Appreciate it. Thanks, everybody for your time tonight. I appreciate the opportunity to come in and offer an update on some of the work that's happening around housing across Ottawa County, in southwest Ottawa County. And I'm excited to, for you to see some of the updates from Mark about projects that are happening across Holland. You're aware of all of them, I think, but to see them all lined up one after another, I hope you're proud of the work that the planning department's been doing. They've been slammed, but dealing with it really well. Go ahead to the next slide now. So just as a quick reminder, I'm going to take you through a very short refresher. You all are probably getting a little bit sick of hearing me talk about who Housing Next is and what we do. But for the sake of anybody who's watching or who may have fallen asleep the last time I gave one of these presentations, just a very brief reminder, Housing Next was set up three years ago by the community foundations and the Greater Ottawa County United Way. And our first order of business was to define the problem. We knew that we had too many people who were paying far too much for rent or to own a home. And we knew that we had a lot of watching or who may have fallen. And we knew that we had a lot of people in the community who weren't able to find housing. And so we wanted to understand just how deep that situation was. And as we were going to work towards solutions, we wanted to know how many housing units we needed at each price point and what types of families were, were most specifically in danger of becoming cost overburdened. So we did that. We did our housing needs assessment by the end of 2018 and we had great data. And I'll cover a little bit of that again with you tonight. And so then we started to dive in on public policy. We started to have conversations with local municipalities about their incentive structures. You all remember, we had a lot of conversations about what incentive structures look like and what your tools were to deal with housing. If you remember, we talked about plan, zone, invest, abate are your major tools as a municipality. And so we've now deeply engaged in the zoning ordinance, the third floor, Mark and Jenna are doing an extraordinary job of that. And then lastly, our role in the marketplace is to ensure we're getting an adequate amount of housing built. Not just to define the problem and kind of work around the edges of policy, but to make sure we're getting projects in the pipeline and across the finish line, getting families moved into those housing units. And around all of that is ensuring that, that we've got nonprofit partners who have the resources and the capacity necessary to kind of step into the, the necessary roles to support all of that structure. Next slide. So as we measure the work that, that we're doing, the Housing Next Board, remember is the community foundation presidents, president of the United Way, our chambers of commerce, Lake Shore Advantage, the Ottawa County Administrator and the Nonprofit Alliance. Tricks for success are these following six metrics. We want to make sure that we've got zoning flexibility that allows housing choice at all price points. We want to make sure that we're collaborating across the region, that we're leveraging as much of the private sector investment as we can, that we're building up that nonprofit capacity, we're growing public support for more housing supply. And we're thinking about kind of the building technology around how do we get more housing built and thinking more lean manufacturing. Next slide. Again, this is a refresher for most of you, but we want to be clear when we talk about housing affordability, that doesn't mean low income. Sometimes it means low income, but what it means is if housing was affordable to you, you're spending 30% of your income or less. And so that's regardless of whether you're making $18,000 a year, $54,000 a year, or $90,000 a year. If you're spending more than 30% of your income on housing, that housing is not affordable to you. So affordability is a relative term to that household's income. Next slide. Y'all, I'm sure remember the Alice data that has been produced by the Greater Ottawa County United Way. Alice is an acronym for asset limited income constrained but employed. That data helps us to understand the number of households that are spending far too much on housing related costs. We know that roughly 31% of households in Ottawa County, meaning 32,000 plus households are spending more than 30% of their income on housing. And what's really unique about Ottawa County is that we have more homeowners who are cost burdened than we do renters. Typically that is the reverse scenario, but in Ottawa County, it's different. And so we've, we've really got to work a little bit on that. Next slide. All right. So we conducted a housing needs assessment at the end of 2018 and it told us how much more housing supply we needed across the county. And so in addition to the policy work that I talked about, we got to work trying to figure out, how do we get more housing built? How do we begin to attack some of these numbers to, to bring those down? So that we don't have such a yawning gap between the number of households looking for housing and the amount of housing supply available in the marketplace. Go ahead and hit next. So this is indicative of the work that we've been doing in partnership with local municipalities across the county. You'll see we've got a little over 500 units currently under construction now. We've got close to 1,400 units that have been approved or are in the pre-planning stages. So we're now in excess of roughly 3,000 new housing units that are either under construction or in the planning pipeline, which is exactly what we set out to do from the beginning. This is the work that we wanted to do. Now, what's critical about this graph or this table in the lower left-hand corner, it says units still needed 2021. That second column over shows you your income bracket. So households earning less than $25,000 a year. In 2018, we needed a little over 1,500 units for that income bracket. Here we are now, two and a half, getting close to three years later, we still need 1,300 more units at that price point. So we're, we're doing a great job moving the needle on moderate and middle income households and upper income households. We're solving for that portion of the equation. The low income is the portion where we're still really struggling. I mean, I'll talk in a few minutes about why that is. Next slide. So now we're going to look at that exact same data, but just relative to southwest Ottawa County. So the last slide you saw was the need that we had across all of Ottawa County. Now we're looking at the Holland Zeeland market only. And so what you see here is once again, we're, we've got a ton of housing supply coming online. We've got lots of middle income products. We've got three, 4% low income housing tax credit deals in progress. We've got a lot of, of middle income and upper income rental housing. I feel like we have satisfied our mission as it relates to that. But again, look at that under $25,000 a year price point, income level. We've, we've, we've got some work underway, but a lot more is necessary. And then down below that, not quite as rosy of a picture, we spent the majority of our first two and a, two and a half years really working on that rental side. And the reason we focused on rental first was because that was the product that was missing the most in the marketplace. And it was the product that was hardest to build in Ottawa County. So we knew Ottawa County is great at building single family homes. And so if, once we ramped up pressure on that, we were going to be able to, to begin to move the needle. It's now time for us to transition away from large format multifamily product and into more owner occupied kinds of product and some incremental infill rental product in kind of ones and twos. Next slide. Oh, so now I'm going to hand it over to Mark, who's going to talk about city of Holland specific projects that are underway.
Excellent. All right. Thank you, Mayor and City Council member. So I got a couple of different buckets really of information for you here tonight. And one of them being kind of what is currently in construction. And that can also include with some developments, some units that are actually being leased. And then what do we see coming down the pipeline that has kind of been more publicly discussed? Okay. And I'll kind of tell at the end of that too. So there, there's even more in the development pipeline that's not really open for a public discussion yet. I'm sure that you can appreciate, we have lots of conversations with, with people, the, the tire kickers that Keith and I refer to, and that we're not really ready to, to talk about that, but there's a lot of, of those things too. So Matt, if you can hit a slide. Okay, we can go to the next one too. So I'm just going to kind of run through these. If you have questions, just let me know. But you know, all of these developments, I think you've seen them all before. Lots of them have been in front of you for approval. Not all of them. But certainly this first one here was, was in front of city council. So this is the Maplewood Village condominium development. It's located down on 40th Street, generally between, I think it's between a college and Columbia Avenue, the south side of the street. So it's a very nice kind of smaller market rate condominium development currently in construction. 46 total dwelling units being built and planned for that one. So Matt, you can go to the next. Immediately adjacent to the Maplewood Village condominiums is a small little, single family residential development. This is being developed by Habitat as well as Jubilee Ministries. It's just, like I say, it's just a small little subdivision, 10 total lots. But this is currently in development. Also, I know Habitat is out there and in Jubilee, I, I believe they're all kind of going vertical with these homes. So that's, that's in progress right now. So next slide, this one just commenced a few weeks ago and they knocked down some buildings on River Avenue, but this is the Towers on River project. So at 159 River Avenue, east side of River Avenue between Sixth and Seventh Streets. So this is going to be a mixed use building, ground floor and second floor, retail office and parking use. And on the upper floors, the top three floors, there's going to be 27 market rate condominium units.
Total?
Yes, 27 units total. Yeah. These are kind of sizable units. And I think that this is, this is definitely going to be on the upper income of that market rate. So kind of going for that profile, customer profile. Next one, you, you all see this one going vertical in downtown too. So this is a, one that GDK is building at the northwest corner of Ninth and River at 212 River Avenue. This is the River Place development. And this is also going to be a really neat mixed use building. So we've got ground floor retail and office. And four floors above that, a total of 21 dwelling units. They're all going to be apartments. GDK is, is entered into, I think it's a longer term lease with a Rest Haven. And Rest Haven is going to be operating these, these units for, I guess, for quite some time. So, but this is going vertical too. So 21 dwelling units there. Black River Flats. So this is kind of a potentially a sleeper one that maybe not a whole lot of people know of because, because of where it's located. But this is way down on the southern extremity of town in their Kensington Place development. So this is on the west side of M40, south of I-196, kind of tucked back in there behind what's it, the Tulip City Truck Stop and stuff back there. So this is a part of, I'll just remind you all, the Kensington Development is a very large master planned community. It was master planned out about 20 years ago now, probably 17, 18, 19 years ago. Total dwelling units in there, I want to say is in the seven to 800 dwelling units. Okay. All different types of housing types from single family detached to duplexes to townhomes, to apartments, to senior living, to kind of commercial buildings with a residential on top. So it's going to, it's got everything. So but this development is in the second phase now. And the second phase is this Black River Flats development. This is a, actually it's now a 240 unit apartment complex. So was originally approved, I think a year or so ago as 216 apartments, nine buildings. Actually, just last evening, the planning commission approved a request by the developer to add one more building. That would have 24 units in it. So this is up to 240 units now. And I believe that this one is kind of targeting workforce housing, which is a great thing given its proximity to, you know, the large industrial side of town. So.
Mark, how long are the rents subsidized on that project?
Oh boy, that's a good question. And I I don't know. Maybe Keith would know that. I want to say eight or 10 years, but I don't know for sure.
I'm going to have Matt unmute Ryan too, because he helped us work on that deal. So it was the length of the financing at the minimum. And the financing went out how long, Ryan? It was?
Yeah, the initial TIF, go ahead, Matt.
No, go ahead. He, he just had to unmute you. So.
Okay. The initial TIF capture period was 10 years. So if, if they typically what happens is you'll capture that increment as the buildings are built out and they're building the buildings in phases. So the longer it takes them to build out the complete project and produce enough increment to reimburse themselves, the longer those units must remain affordable at 80%.
So it depends is the answer. Yeah.
It does.
And, and that was the tool that we had available to us at that point, right? And we're pretty proud of that because I, you know, they had a problem moving forward with the market rate. And I think they knew we were having these discussions and they at that point was Scott Gerling's from Midwest Construction. And that's where, you know, we were in the middle of all these conversations and Ryan from Housing Next helped us in those discussions and we came up with the ability to, to do the Brownfield TIF in a way that we had never done outside of the downtown area in this way. So that was a pretty creative use that, that got the, this project going at all, much less at this targeted 80%.
Okay. So with, with this development too, there, two of the buildings are complete. So that's 48 units are, are open for leasing right now. I know the, the builder is going to be back on site this spring and is going to continue on with the third, fourth building. So they're, they're kind of green lighted to keep moving. So then the last one that's, that's in development right now is the Shoreline Flats development. This is out on the very eastern extremity of town, out on East 16th Street, out at Quarterline Road. So this is a, this is a market rate development. 175 apartments are being built and these are, these are actively being leased at this time also. So this is a JR, the JR Kendall Group out of Indianapolis. Go to the next one. Okay. So like I say, that's what's being built right now. So kind of a peek here at things that are in the development pipeline. So first off the bat is the Magnus Capital Project. This one actually, the developer had a show and tell presentation with the planning commission last evening. This, their, the site here is the northeast corner of 24th Street in Waverly. I think it's about nine or 10 acre parcel. The developer is looking to build 100 and I think it's 175 or thereabouts dwelling units of apartments for this. This would be a 4% MISTDA project. So they would be going through Michigan, it's Michigan State Housing Development Authority for financing. What that does require then is that this developer will be coming to city council directly and be asking you for approval of a pilot ordinance. And then presumably a kind of a municipal service agreement that goes along with that. So the developer anticipates, last I talked with him, they'll be coming into the planning commission, I want to say in the March or April timeframe for development plan approval with this. So this one has already got the proper zoning. So it won't be coming to you all for, for zoning. It's already got that in hand. So council, like I say, council will just, you'll just be seeing it for the development incentive piece. So next slide. Yeah. So our, the previously owned city parcel out at 285 West 36th Street.
Good job, Mark. You didn't call it what you're not allowed to call it.
Oh, I wouldn't dare say that word that starts with a W. So this is the Habitat in the Jubilee Ministries property, and they have closed on this. So they they closed on the property back in the, actually, the end of December. And just to remind everybody, so this, what you're seeing on the screen here, just the northern half of this is actually was the previously-city-owned property. The southern half, Habitat and Jubilee are looking to buy from another individual, Dick Darby. Many people know Dick Darby from in town here, but I, they, and in fact, Jubilee and Habitat may have already purchased that. I I don't know for sure, but they're they're intending on following through with that. So this project is, as council members remember, this one did get final zoning approval from you all. It's got final site plan approval. They still need, though, to come back to the planning commission to get site condominium plan approval. So they will be looking to do that, I would think, anytime now. The last time I talked with Don at Habitat, it's I think that that's fairly imminent, but that is kind of the last hurdle that they need to go through. And then they're pretty much in in the clear as far as getting their their development approvals from the city. So this one again is forty-two, has forty-two dwelling units, a mixture, single-family detached, that Habitat would be building, and then townhouses that Jubilee would be building. So.
Hey, Mark.
Yes.
Got a question. Was it for, has that number changed, that forty-two?
I don't. This is what I believe was was approved by the planning commission with the development plan. So maybe it's maybe Habitat is tweaking that a little bit. We'll find out when they come in for their final kind of site condominium plan. If they're able to maintain forty-two, or if that has to drop a little bit. So but to the best of my information, this is, this is the number.
Quincy, I think where, one of the times where that number changed is is at one point, when we looked at it, where it was just the city parcel, it was a lesser number. But then when they picked, when they expanded the site plan to use the other private parcel, then that number expanded. So that might be where one of the numbers maybe changed, changed in my mind, too, but in your mind also. So that's, that's where that number went up a little bit.
Okay.
Yeah, that, that is a good point to make. So on on the city property itself, so here again, just the northern half, I believe there's nineteen dwelling units proposed for that. So and then the balance is on the the southern property. Go to the next one. Okay, another very large one that's in the works is a Rest, is the Rest Haven property. So Rest Haven, and this is out on East Twenty-Fourth Street, east of Waverly. Rest Haven purchased a forty-acre parcel out there. Some of you might remember, Rest Haven took a swing at this about fifteen years ago or so, too. And we're not successful at that time. You know, we had this big thing, the Great Recession, that kind of came in, and I think messed things up. But but Rest Haven is taking another swing at it. From everything, I can tell they're they're doing a really good job with this. The plan that they're gonna be proposing is gonna be very similar to what they came in with fifteen years ago. But it's gonna be, you know, a lot of different housing types. So they're gonna be looking to have single-family detached to single-family attached in apartments and everything else. So they are still in the private planning stage with this. However, they're they're pretty public with showing their plans and so forth on their website. So I didn't feel abashed at all, kind of copying that and for your attention here. So in talking with their executive director, they're anticipating coming to the planning commission later this spring for plan approvals at that time. I don't quite know yet if they're gonna need any incentives from city council. I guess we'll we'll find out that with that. There's some other kind of planning things that are going on in this whole neck of the woods, and I'll talk a little bit about that, too, in a little bit. But when it comes to connectivity, street connectivity and so forth, so we we might wanna talk with them about, you know, some some incentive tools that we might be able to work with them to to get some streets and so forth in here. So I'm kind of anticipating that there's gonna be, you know, two hundred-plus dwelling units with this development. And this would be a two-phased project, too, so.
Mark, and if I can, and if I, if you're gonna cover this, you kind of said, but to to be a little more explicit even. So if you work from right to left here, you've got the dog park is exactly to the right of what you see. And then you have this development, and then and then pretty immediately to the left of what you see is that Magnus Capital project that we, that Mark presented earlier. And when he talks about connectivity, we're very interested in the planning commissions, and planning staff are doing a great job. And then that's where Ryan, with his other hat, being the economic developer from the city, we're working on figuring out a connectivity from Twenty-Fourth Street to Sixteenth Street in this area. So that's when Mark talks about street connectivity and figuring out some incentives that this, that we'd be wanting the, probably having the city involved with that. That's the background work that we're laying the stage for, communicating very clearly to everyone and what we're driving towards. So just so you're aware of that.
Well, awesome. This is, this is a question I didn't get a chance to ask last night, but I didn't know that this, this project was right next to the other one. Is there, are you thinking about connectivity between these two developments, or only just north-south?
Yeah, so that there actually is one property between this one and
Oh, okay.
property. So I think it's like a five- or ten-acre parcel that actually Grand Valley State University owns, that's immediately to the west of this. So they're
Okay.
fortunately, they're not immediately adjacent, but they're close.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
Mark, that that landing strip right next to what's the future phase there? Looks like the landing strip going along the left-hand side of the picture there. Is that the, is that the Hope Avenue extension, or pretty close to it?
Oh, well, that that is an area right now. I don't know if there's, if that's what they're actually trying to show here. I think that they're just kind of showing that's an, that's an open field area. I know that there is kind of a sanitary sewer line that goes cross-country here, but I believe that's all entirely on the Grand Valley property to the west of here. So I can tell you that there's, there's been a lot of internal staff discussion. And, you know, a lot of it come from the B P W, too, cuz they don't like to have sewer mains that go cross-country. They like to have a street over the top of it, but that would kind of be a preferred location in that general area. I mean, if there was to be a public street, you know, could it somehow kind of hug that that western kind of property line here? So but this is we're still, we're still investigating all the possibilities. And like Keith said, Ryan is a, is gonna be getting a project. In fact, it's probably already going, but we wanna take a closer look with some design help, looking at, doing it a more granular look at utilities and stormwater, and really trying to get a better integrated plan that we can talk with all these property owners so they can see the benefit of of working to better, working together on providing streets and in providing integrated stormwater management that could also, you know, be park amenities or green open space amenities. So we're we're, we're working on all that, Mike.
That has the potential to be a real hot corner there. I remember Ryan talking about the south side of Twenty-Fourth Street there at Waverly. So you've got three potentially major projects going on in that corner. Along with the topography that we've got, everything else that is gonna be a challenge to the east there, but welcome to Holland Heights.
Yeah, I've, Mike, I've gotten quite a few phone calls kind of related to the whole Udo process of folks further down Twenty-Fourth Street here. They're not happy. They're, they're, yeah. They're, yeah, they're seeing their neighborhood potentially change right in front of their eyes when they they see the Farmstead property, project here, when they see the Magnus property just up the hill. Yeah, there, some people are are a little concerned about what's happening.
We've got some natural buffer there, though, Mark, if you think about it. You've got, you've got Benrolti Farm on the north side, you've got the church on the south side. That's not going anywhere.
Yeah.
Yeah, I.
This was always gonna develop, right?
Yeah, I could tip it. Well, then, and yeah, when the, I can't remember who owned both those properties, but he's been talking for years about doing that. Obviously, with with Rest Haven in the spot that they're at now, I mean, hadn't been for two thousand and eight, that would have been all built out already. They, they went heavy and hard on that with Mr. Vannenbrook.
Yes, it was called or something.
Yeah, they had viewing stands and the whole nine yards up there to be able to see the vision in that field. I'm excited, but I'm also cautious. I understand where the neighbors are coming from here, so.
It's a lot of units.
Lot of change.
Yeah.
And that's where, really give credit to Mark and his crew. You know, on third floor, but also Planning Commission, you know, they're making sure, Mike, that there, these aren't just coming kind of as standalone things. And with your support, council, you know, we've done the Waverly sub-area plan. So we're working on making sure that these are as coordinated as possible and that some of the the values that we have, you know, the connectivity, maybe something other than, you know, if you're coming out of the Farmstead someday, you could get to Sixteenth Street, or you could get to Meyer some way other than having to go on Twenty-Fourth and then go on Waverly and then, and then, you know, come back around. So I think we're doing the right things, we're pursuing the right things, but there's a lot of pre-work in all of that and a lot of planning. And that's why Mark, I think, lives in his office these days.
The red Mustang is here quite a bit.
But it's good stuff, right? Like, like, we're pursuing, there's a lot of interest and we're pursuing things.
I've got some up, in in just a little bit here, we got the Waverly Sub-Area Plan, so you can kind of see the the aerial photo of things, so, too. So another one, I don't know how much this has been discussed, but I think it's, it's, people kind of know about it. I did not get permission from them to share kind of a concept plan that they have, but suffice it to say, so Hope Church and First United Methodist Church do have some surplus properties to the west of of their sanctuary buildings and in their campus areas. And they are very much looking forward to doing about a thirty-five to forty kind of unit apartment buildings. They'll be looking to do two apartment buildings in in this area, kind of between their churches, as you see here, and Pine Avenue. So, so more to come with that. I think that they're, they're looking in terms of be asking for MISTDA financing with this one also, and that would also require some incentives from city council. So but more to come with that one in the future.
And Mark, that would be a nine percent as opposed to the four percent deal, is what we're thinking, right?
That's what they're talking about, yeah. So that's highly competitive. So so those were the ones, folks, that are kind of in the pipeline that have some degree of discussion. So but I wanted to bring your attention to, to the the Waverly Sub-Area Plan and kind of the East Sixteenth Street corridor. So this this Waverly Sub-Area Plan is really kind of in a develop, or it's in a development bullseye. We knew it would be when we took a look at this a couple of years ago, and it's happening, okay? So I'm glad we did the planning back then. So but if you can look at the Waverly Sub-Area Plan, you can kind of discern some of the, the, the big chunk properties in here. So I'm just trying to, if you can orient yourself, so you see the big parcel kind of towards the top of that plan. It's a big hundred-and-sixty-acre parcel. That's the park, Benrolti Park. And then immediately west of that is a forty-acre, that's where Rest Haven is looking to go. And then if you can kind of follow right, yep. So and if you can follow just to the west of that, you see the the Grand Valley State University symbol there. So that's, that's their commuter campus on Waverly. And there might be some future opportunities with with that, too, in the future. As as far as I know, I mean, they're still using it, but I don't think that the commuter campus kind of paradigm is real. Yeah, maybe it's a kind of, oh, living its youthful, usefulness now.
Future, Mark, future police academy, potentially. That's what's being discussed there for right now.
Okay.
With Billy Wallace. That's, they're, they're looking at that. He has been giving us at the P C R, giving you some updates on that. So that may be their new campus for that.
Interesting. Okay. So and then the the properties just south of that, you can see the one right at the corner is the Magnus Property that we looked at earlier, and then then the other one just east of that is another property owned by Grand Valley. So and then you can see the the Meyer area there, which I go there and I can't find anything anymore, so I'm kind of disgruntled about that, but that's another story. So then the properties on Sixteenth Street there, so there's, there's a sizable chunk of land that is surplus Meyer property. And I can tell you, there's, there are developers looking at that, okay? Can't really divulge a whole lot more than that, but there are, there are people that are taking a really close look at that property. And then just east of that, there's the Mercantile Bank property. And that's an ideal development site, too. I mean, at least in the backside of the bank, that property I know is for sale. Might be for sale for quite some time. I I don't know, but it is for sale, so nothing's gonna happen as far as new development in the near future. But then there's two properties east of that. Mike, you know these for sure. That's nine seventeen, nine twenty-eight, East Sixteenth Street. I think that was the the Baumann property. So ten acres of property there. We have developers that are looking at those properties, too. So those are kind of more integrated with the Mercantile Bank property because of the access that comes off from Sixteenth Street. So but suffice it to say, these are all prime development properties that will very likely be coming in 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 the near future, whether that's a year or the next few years. I can see them coming in. And then it kind of goes off the map here, but we, we know, and Mike knows this particularly, there are other vacant properties in the East Sixteenth Street corridor. And we got people that are looking at basically all of them. And I can't say much more than that, but they're, they're looking at all of the the larger vacant properties on East Sixteenth Street. So so, I mean, just kind of looking at all that, I estimate you, there could be very easily five hundred new dwelling units with all this. I mean, it could be upwards of a thousand. So this is kind of a range, five, five hundred to a thousand new dwelling units kind of in this general area. And then just lastly, to kind of round it out, of course, our downtown area, okay? And I saw, I kind of threw up a sketch here. This is one from the waterfront Holland vision. You all know the visioning that process that went into that, and you all know that there is a tremendous amount of housing opportunity in downtown Holland. We're seeing it now with a couple developments. We will see more in the future also. I don't, I'm not aware of anything that more that's imminent. But we know that, you know, the down, the north downtown area, the Sixth Street corridor, Central Avenue, kind of going north, that area is really, it's kind of ripe and prime for additional housing development as well as things that can happen on the waterfront. So I think I'll, I'll leave it at that, and if anybody's got any additional questions, I'll try to answer them, so.
Mark, just a question about the north downtown area. Any, any construction or housing construction that we're thinking about there is not on the window on the waterfront park property? Is it, it's the private property that we're looking at, correct?
Um, I, I believe so, yes.
Okay.
But this, this particular vision that you've seen here, I very well made Very well may sneak a little bit on the north side of of Sixth Street there. To tell you the honest truth.
Yeah, this one doesn't, Mark, so I I can take that one mayor, so and and we'll, um. North downtown is is a specific study session that we're going to come back mayor and present on. Um, because we've got multiple kind of things happening there. And the way that I think of it or describe it is staff has been operating really on. I I think it's almost like the building of a of a thirty year vision in this area. So, um, but when you take a look at the Sixth Street. Um. Corridor kind of design, and we're kind of marching into plans there. Um, but also the long talked about ex College Avenue Extended. Um. And all of the complexity involved with that, with state departments and Army Corps of Engineers and. Old city dumps and all those types of things. We're we're pulling together a lot of pieces. Um, to have a dedicated study session just to talk about that. Because there's a lot of moving parts, so, um. We'll have that probably, though, that's going to be um, in March, that will target a study session on that specifically.
I'm happy to wait.
I think just maybe one last. Thing, you know, if there's no more questions, um, just kind of the numbers. So. I don't know, maybe some folks have been writing down the numbers as I as I've noted them, so. Um, really kind of so between the the uh, the the. Housing that's actively being constructed right now. As well as the ones that are kind of in the pipeline or soon to be in the pipeline. That's about a thousand dwelling units. Um, so that's that's a sizable number. That's 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 quite a bit. Which is which is wonderful. Um, it's wonderful to see the the private sector. Um, really kind of kicking into gear. And in providing the housing that we that we really need, so.
Nikki's got a question for you, I think, Mark.
So does this, listening to Ryan at the beginning and now listening to you. Does any of these, uh, this. Proposed or future building answer any of the housing needs? I mean, I see some of them. I mean, obviously not the high end places downtown, um, towers, the towers, but. Is this helping? And I I think, you know, when he, Ryan, you were talking about Southwest Ottawa County, if we think regionally. And I see Holland Township is, um.
Yep.
We working the the malls, some of the malls there and adding units, and we're adding. Um, in the city out, um, I know Scott Gierling's Development. Which is in Alleghan County. Are are we? Working with everyone together to? Kind of meet needs, not just Holland, doing all the heavy lifting?
Yeah, absolutely. Um, so all of this, all of this housing product is satisfying the regional housing demand. Um, at certain price points, right? So, um, whether we like it or not, the economy functions on a regional and kind of a mega regional basis. Um, and so whether the housing is getting built in downtown Holland or in. Zeeland Township or in Hudsonville, it's all impacting one another because. There are only so many families out there in the marketplace. And when there are too many families relative to housing supply. Um, the folks at the top of the income spectrum can outcompete everybody else and they drive prices up. Um, as we start to get a more balanced housing market, those price increases are going to slow down dramatically. Um, and some of our higher, um, our higher rent. Units are going to begin to come down a little bit in in the rental amount. Now, we're not going to see a one to one rent decrease in our lowest rent units. Uh, because we still have a lot of folks who are who are income constrained. And competing for a relatively small number of of low rent units. So there's still work to be done at that end of the income spectrum. But um, what what you're seeing here is. A lot of the work that needs to be done beyond this. Um, while we're going to need to continue to grow as the population grows. We're not playing catch up anymore in terms of housing unit production. What we now need to do is start to adjust the economics for those individual households is is to find ways to support those particular families. Um, within the housing matrix that you've now seen tonight, there's a lot of supply coming online. We just need to make sure that we can get families into it without straining their budgets.
And is there a transportation component to any of this? Because I see congestion. On the roads.
Yeah, well, I think what's what's really nice about what's happening in the city. And frankly, a lot of what we've been able to help influence in Holland Township. Is we've really tried to focus, at least at Housing Next, we've tried to focus a lot of our energy. Along existing transit corridors. Or corridors that we think could be well served by max transit. Um, if there's a future realignment of routes. So the Waverly or Hundred and Twentieth Corridor is actually a fantastic. Corridor to really increase service over time. Um, and Mike Trithu and I have had this conversation in the past. Um, you you can't adjust the route until you have the demand. And so as a lot of this housing product comes online in Holland Township, and then again in the city of Holland. Um, I think over the next couple of years, there will be an opportunity for the Max to think about. Um, is there a need for a reroute or for a new route? Um, to better support a lot of those households.
Thank you.
Nikki, that was kind of the great question, too, because it really segued into Ryan's going to kind of take things over again and kind of go back and answer some of those. Questions even as he. As he proceeds. Um, but just so you know, like, like even what Mark talked about, so. The Magnus Capital Project with a four percent where something would come back to you if that proceeds. You know, Ryan, Mark, help me with that. That's probably kind of that mid middle column of. Numbers that Ryan, um, started the presentation on, kind of the scorecard of how we're doing.
Yeah.
Whereby the Hope United Methodist project project, if that proceeds and it's looking at a nine percent. Okay, that's that maybe trickles into very much that first column.
Yep.
So what you'll see is that the projects that Mark talked about. We we have projects that are in all of the columns, which I which I think is very is positive.
Yeah, Matt, if you want to jump to the next slide, I'll I'll do a little bit more of the presentation and then we'll go full.
I have a question first before we proceed. Um, piggybacking off of what Nikki was speaking of. Um, this may be to Mike as well, but. I understand what you're saying as far as down the road. Max would have the opportunity to. Um, increase routes, but. I guess my question is, have they planned that? Have they looked? And made sure that they're capable of doing that? Because when. There's an influx of, we'll say, an increase, we could say even fifty percent, thirty percent, right? Are they able to handle that? Or will that put a major strain on on that organization?
What's a, if I might, Ryan, that's a darned if you do, darned if you don't situation, because. Right now, you notice that the. Uh, in the in the immediate. You've noticed that the routes are going to start opening March first.
Yep.
But not all the routes.
Right.
There's a there's a major reason for that. They can't find enough drivers.
Hmm.
Um, we are in negotiation, have been in negotiation with Park Township. If we could get everybody. On the same page, Zeeland Township, City of Zeeland, City of Holland. Park Township, Fillmore Township. All getting in on the mass transit. Things would go a whole lot smoother. But people are, but some of the other jurisdictions. Are taking their time a little bit. Um, we're we're nicely in negotiations with Park Township right now. Trying to expand it out. There's demand service out there. There's a there's a number of fixed routes because of some destination spots. But there's a whole lot more that could be done out there, and there's study after study after study of making sure, as Ryan said, that we get. The, um, for lack of better terms, the highways. To the major stops. Um, and the major points that people need to go. Shopping, medical. And. Assisted living. You've got Benjamin's Hope out there. You've got a number. You've got West Otto School. There's a number of things that need to be tied in. So to answer your question. Absolutely, we're looking or Max is looking at that. Um. Can it be handled right away? No, but we're also making sure. That we don't jump into something. Um, prior to the ability to be able to handle it, because we don't want to have the situation that you're that you're referring to. Long answer for a short question, but.
No, I I I really appreciate that. Um, one of the things that I'm thinking is, you know. One of the things that might help is to. Present some of these. Um, things that we have on the on the. Plate right now. Um, that the people that you are trying to. Get to be on board, if they knew or understand the impact of these housing units that we have going in. That down the line and and their areas. That maybe they're going to look at a long term plan that could be sustainable. I I think planning for that is key. We can't just plan for. Well, we got to do this right now. We're lacking, um, even though we're lacking drivers right now, we have to. Still playing long term for that. That that's where I'm I'm going and and just questioning that. That's all.
You're right.
Just a couple of quick questions from me, just a maybe you'll hit on these, uh. Ryan, uh, but I did I did miss like writing down some notes. I didn't start writing them down until. Probably halfway through the list of those different developments that are in the pipeline. Um, so if I could get those numbers, probably more mark, um. I'd like the kind of the total number of units again per per development, just the name and the and the total. We can go through that or I can, I mean, I. I could go back and watch the video too. Um, but if you could hit me with those again, that would be great. But then also wondering if. Ryan, maybe you have this information more so or a sense, but what what those different, um. Income ranges, each one of those developments is kind of planning on on targeting.
Yeah, Raul, I've got a detailed spreadsheet that gives you a sense. Um, and it's a it's a document that I've been sharing as part of our metrics to my board. Um, I'm happy to share it with you as well. I'll probably edit it. There are a couple of projects that aren't yet public. Um, so I'll send you the version that has publicly known projects only. Uh, but I'm happy to share that with Keith as well, if if the rest of the council is interested in seeing that.
That'd be great.
Yes.
Yeah, what we'll do is we'll make this entire presentation available, so you have the PowerPoint. And then Ryan will also package what he just talked about. So you kind of have that. You know, numbers, metrics down. That shows it again, Ottawa County, southwest, and then City of Holland. Um, that that's what we were really. We we knew our direction was tonight, and we were excited to share all this information with you.
Awesome, thank you.
I think I cut out there too, and one thing Quincy, where you were talking about the importance of Max. I think that's one of the benefits that we have in Ryan being at Housing Next. And when you take a look at who's on. The. Board of Housing Next for Ryan. You've got Lake Shore Advantage, you've got the Chambers of Commerce, you have those. Because the businesses are very interested in the same thing that you were talking about there. Because what's their need, Ryan, right? These companies, these businesses, they they need good employees. That have the ability, uh, using a transportation system to be reliable and being able to get back and forth to work. So you really see a lot of alignment and a lot of planning that is happening here. Um, and I think. Kind of in good West Michigan or Ottawa County or City of Holland fashion, like. You know, the. The groups are coming together. Um, to to move this in the right direction, from my perspective.
Okay, thank you.
Uh, I'm going to wrap up these slides real quick. Um, Matt, you can go ahead and jump to the next one. This one. We've looked at long enough. Um, yeah, this is this is good. So, um, just keep in mind that a lot of the the housing growth that we're focused on is actually smaller households. So what we've seen so far is a lot of multifamily housing, and the reason for that is in southwest Ottawa County. Um, over the last thirty years, we've built a fair amount of single family detached product. Which is a really important product and and um, price point for the market. But we hadn't really built a lot of other types of housing. For households that are just one or two people. Um, and as you can see here, sixty seven percent of renter households are just one or two adult households with no kids. Um, and so part of this work is to really ensure that we have an appropriate mix of housing types. Um, and housing price points across every neighborhood. Go ahead to the next slide.
Hey, one one quick question, Matt. Go back. Please, what what do those bars represent?
Yeah, so those bars, uh, represent the share of households, uh, across Ottawa County. And so, sorry, you're I I see why you're asking the question. The key is missing. So the the blue is, um, Ottawa County. And the light kind of greenish blue is southwest Ottawa County, so you can kind of. Compare what's happening countywide relative to southwest Ottawa County.
Thank you.
Yeah, good question. Uh, we can skip the slide. That one's just about making sure we're building buildings that have strong character. Uh, this gets into, so everything you've seen so far is mostly large projects, big investments that require a developer and a giant commercial loan and a few million dollars or more in investment. There's another opportunity for us over the long term. Um, this doesn't produce hundreds of units. It produces. A dozen or of tens of units over time. But. It's a more incremental and equitable approach. So what we wanted to do over the last three years is play catch up. We were way behind on the number of total housing units that we needed across Ottawa County. What we don't want to do for the next ten years is is constantly go through this surge and recede process where we build a bunch of housing and then we wait a few years, and then we build a bunch of housing. What we want to do is is really support a more resilient community that allows for individuals to add one or two units at a time. Um, that is in keeping it in character with the the surrounding neighborhood. So here, as you all are aware, the the current zoning update is talking a lot about accessory dwelling units. Um, in certain districts, um, and where certain provisions are met. This is an important part of the overall recipe, right? It's not, it's not the biggest part. It's not going to supply a lot of housing. But it's a really important way, um, that one allows people to age in place. Um, where they may be on a fixed income and their taxes start to get a little bit out in front of them. Um, by providing an extra dwelling unit onsite, they can begin to make up some of that mortgage payment. Um, and tax payments so they can stay in their home and stay in the city of Holland. And two is for that new first time homeowner, um, who can't quite earn enough income to afford a mortgage in the city of Holland. Um, but if they're able to create that secondary unit, that will create enough income that allows them to afford that mortgage. And what we're finding right now is the average sales price in the city of Holland is now up to two hundred and thirty thousand dollars. So, um, I know a lot of you were deeply involved in the city ten years ago, coming out of the Great Recession. And property values were a big issue at that time. Um, we have fully recovered and then some. Um, with property values continuing to increase by about six or seven percent a year, which is pushing those values out of reach for more and more families. Next slide. Um, so the other one, and and this is the one that we're going to really start working on more over the next two years. Um, is homeownership opportunities. Uh, as I mentioned earlier, we had our largest gap as it related to rental product across Ottawa County. But, um, now what we need to begin to do is think about ownership opportunities that don't necessarily require a single family home on an individual lot. Um, and the reason for that is that's the most expensive kind of house to buy. Right? When you have to pay for the lot cost and all of the infrastructure that serves it. Um, and typically what you're paying for is fifteen hundred to three thousand square feet. Again, uh, you saw the the stat that sixty seven percent of renters were just one or two adults with no kids. Sixty two percent of homeowners are one or two adults with no kids at home. Still close to two thirds of our population. Um, and so providing for smaller format housing opportunities, providing for attached housing, condominium style housing. This is where the the waterfront redevelopment process and north downtown is going to be really helpful, getting more kind of small format condos downtown. Um, creates new housing opportunities. Um, that are homeownership opportunities, um, within the city of Holland that didn't exist before. Next slide. So real quickly, I want to walk you through, um, kind of what it costs, so you have a sense of of. Where the numbers sit today. Go ahead and hit next. Um, average cost of construction, this is for. Um, a suburban garden style apartment, right? So when we talk about G D K, their numbers are going to be fifty percent higher than this. Um, because they're building gorgeous brick buildings downtown on dirty sites. Um, so when we go out to a green field and and we talk about, um, three. Um, so when we go out to a green field and, and we talk about, um, three stories, no elevators. Um, hardy board siding or vinyl siding, your construction costs are going to be about 150 to 100,000, 180,000 dollars per apartment unit. Hit next, please. So when we look at a typical investor model, what they're going to do is divide that cost over a 10-year period. Uh, and then divide that by 12 months a year. And that's roughly their rent, right? So they need to be able to pay their debt service. They probably have a loan on the development. Um, plus operating costs, plus whatever their investors expect to, to get in terms of a return. And that's how we get at these rental rates. So. Brand-new construction is almost always going to come in somewhere between a thousand dollars a month and 1,400 dollars a month. Go ahead and hit next. So what's important to understand is in order to afford that rent. Um, if it's a single-earning adult, they've got to be earning $44,000 a year, so about $21 an hour. Um, now that's not, that's still a pretty middle-class wage, right? It's a fairly common wage. But we also need to recognize that 60% of the population earns less than $20 an hour. So while we're building the, all the new market rate housing, it's affordable to 40% of the population. Go ahead and hit next. So the result is if, if we're not able to provide additional subsidies in the process. Then we have households that can't, that have a place to rent now, but they've got to spend more of their income than they should be spending in order to rent it. Next slide. All right, go ahead and hit next there. Thank you. Uh, so this is where we get back into the, that table that I was showing you earlier, where we're doing a great job on middle-income and high-income housing. Um, it's the low end of the income spectrum that we're having a hard time hitting in terms of the cost of the unit. Per rent, right? And so the way that we do that, you saw what the cost of construction looks like. No matter how good you are at building or development, those costs are the costs. We, we can't bring them down unless we're building 200 square foot units. And so what we need to be able to do is find other ways to subsidize those units or support the families who want to live in them. Go ahead and hit next. So one of the programs that does that is called the Housing Choice voucher. That's distributed by the Department of Housing and Urban Development. Um, it goes through both, um, the state Housing Development Authority as well as through local public housing agencies. The good news is with the recreation of the Ottawa County Housing Commission, they are now eligible to become Housing Choice voucher recipients. They can become allocaties of those vouchers. Now, the bad news is Congress hasn't invested in the voucher program in more than a decade, right? So there hasn't been an increase in the number of vouchers that have been funded or released in a long time. The good news is the, the current administration has been talking a lot about fully funding the voucher program. Up until now, roughly one in three households who are eligible actually receive a voucher. And even once they've received the voucher, they have to find a landlord that's willing to accept it. Um, there are good signs pointing to a potential bipartisan bill. Um, that would fully fund the Housing Choice voucher so that. Of all of these new housing units that we've now been able to get in the construction pipeline. More and more of those will become financially accessible to those lower-income families without a, a local public subsidy. Go ahead and hit next. The other program to support those lowest-income households, and really there are just these two programs. Um, at the end of the day, there are a couple of smaller ones that are sort of one-offs, but these are the two primary ones. The other one is the, the low-income housing tax credit. That's the largest public investment that gets made in new construction housing today. Um, and there's a 4% version and a 9% version. The 4% is relatively non-competitive. Um, but it only funds about half of the construction costs. So the developers got to figure out how to fund the other half. While still keeping rents low to low-income households. The 9% funds roughly 80% of the construction costs. The problem is this is a highly competitive program. Um, so you've got to have a perfect site in the perfect location and it's got to meet all of Mishna's criteria in order to get funded. Uh, the good news is we have one of those projects underway now in a really great location. Mark alluded to it earlier in partnership with a couple of churches downtown. We feel very, very good about that project getting funded. Once we get it, um, submitted to, to Mishna, we hope to have it submitted later on this year. Um, but the likelihood of getting more than one of those projects funded in any calendar year is pretty low. Um, so we need to kind of focus all of our energy on that project first. Um, and in the meantime, we're going to continue to put pressure on our congressional representatives. To ensure that they understand the need for those housing choice vouchers here in Ottawa County. Go ahead and hit next. And I think, yeah, I just covered this point. Go ahead and go to the next slide. So lastly, this is, this is the other important point. Um, as we talk about allowing for incremental adjustments at the neighborhood scale. Um, you saw the numbers for the construction costs to build a new apartment unit. Um, 150 to 180,000 dollars to build a new apartment unit. Uh, what's important to know is the renovation cost of existing residential real estate is far lower. Go ahead and hit next. More often than not, if we're taking an existing home or an existing apartment building. And we're going to renovate that to create a new unit within, uh, a, a pre-established four walls. The cost of that is roughly 30,000 to 140,000 dollars per unit. So if, if I own my home and I'm going to create an apartment upstairs, what I've got to do is install a kitchen. Probably relocate the bathroom, um, or maybe move a wall. Um, and so my costs to do those kinds of things are going to be 20 to 30,000 dollars. And then I've got a, a, a brand-new apartment that's available for lease. Uh, go ahead and hit next. And so what happens when I can create an apartment out of existing real estate. I can keep those rents quite a bit lower than I can if I've got to build something brand-new whole cloth. So here we're looking at apartments that are priced in that 500 to 1,000, 500 to 1,100 dollars a month. These higher-end rent levels are, uh, assumptions that we're building a brand-new little building in the backyard, like an accessory dwelling unit. The lower-end rent assumptions and costs assume that we're converting existing space. Go ahead and hit next. So what we expect based on the financial makeup of the neighborhoods as well as the physical constraints. Um, is that we're not going to get hundreds of new units as a result of allowing for, um, some incremental adjustments in local zoning. What's more likely based on the financial constraints, and remember what I said earlier. Average sales price of homes in the city of Holland is now 230,000 dollars. Um, so in order for a private landlord to buy a single-family house. Invest $30,000 to convert it into a two-family. They would have to be getting rents of close to 1,200 dollars a month or more per unit. In order to make that investment make sense. And in Holland, uh, we don't necessarily have enough folks who are willing to spend that on those locations. So those projects by and large don't make sense, except. Where they're able to get those last few houses that haven't been invested in, in quite a long time. And put in a decent amount of investment to make those work. So what we anticipate right now is roughly to 40, 40 to 50 new units as a result of those incremental zoning adjustments. And then you'll get a handful every few years, um, which is good because it creates a sense of resiliency in the city. Where you can kind of have that elastic supply. Over time, as there's more demand, individual homeowners can participate in the solutions. Um, they can also participate in their own solutions in terms of providing extra passive income onsite. But there won't be enough demand for there to be a sea change in terms of how properties are used. Go ahead and hit next. Uh, and actually I think we can, we can skip this and just go straight to, to Q and A. We're, this is just kind of talking about, we've got to be strategic in terms of the way that we make these investments and these aren't just like. One-off ideas to solve a short-term problem. What we're trying to do is. Build an ecosystem that is supportive of long-term, sustainable, economically vibrant community.
Yeah, Scott. Oh, he needs to be unmuted.
Um, thank you, Mayor Box. Um, Mayor Box, you mentioned earlier, the Planning Commission has already committed or allows for accessory dwellings. In certain parts of the residential area. Is that correct?
Right, right now, I, uh, detached accessory dwelling units are allowed in certain areas. I'm going to, I'm going to pass that to Mark for more detail on that. We have been talking in regard to Udo about the potential of some, some attached accessory dwelling units. Uh, if their owner occupied, if one of the units is owner occupied and some other things, but we haven't made a final decision on that yet.
Yeah, i- in regards to detached accessory dwelling units, I believe they're allowed in all residential zone districts right now, Scott. And it's been that way for, ooh, four, five, six years. Um, that that's been on the books. So, um. There's rules and regs, there's hoops that people got to jump through in order to get, um, you know, a detached accessory. Uh, detached accessory dwelling unit, it's a mouthful, uh, to get that approved. Um, but it is doable. Um, granted, over the last, uh, five years or so, we've only had a handful of people actually go through that process and, and construct something. So. It's been slow on the uptake and I think a lot of that's just been due to very, very high construction costs.
So this is not a discussion on Udo right now. Otherwise, there are lots of questions, but this is just. No, a, a number of how, how do you do it this way?
Yeah, well, and if, if I can say one thing, what I wanted to do is give you kind of a broad picture of the ecosystem we're trying to build relative to housing. Uh, because we, we've heard a lot of comments and concerns come in regarding Udo that. The, the proposals in Udo are designed to solve for the housing problem. Um, and I, what we wanted to share tonight is we're solving for the housing problem in a totally different way. Mostly I think that is in alignment with what the community has been asking for and you've seen all of those projects that we're producing. Um, but I wanted to give you context about how what is happening with Udo relates to all of the other work that we've been doing.
Good, thank you.
Yeah, and, and to answer that also Nikki and just kind of reminder, it's, it's almost like, remember I gave that little speech at the beginning of the meeting and, and I'll, I'll give it towards the end of the meeting too. Ryan had Housing Next hat on tonight when he spoke to you, except for that one time when we talked about the Waverly Sub-Area Plan. And I think that Ryan, I don't attend them all because I'd always be here too with Mark and. Mayor and Lynn who go to the Planning Commission meetings, but. Um, a lot of the slide depth that Ryan just went through were. Portions of slides and costs that he has given very specifically on the Udo. Um, so there's some overlap, but yeah, um, from Housing Next perspective. You guys asked for it and we wanted to give kind of that broader ecosystem update that Ryan just, just described even better than I.
That's very helpful.
Yeah, Lynn.
Ryan, the last time you talked to us, um, you gave us an update, or maybe it was when we were talking about the housing development policy. Um, I asked you what we, you thought our next steps should be. And I mean, as a council, how do we kind of set the vision and which direction do we go? And you, you, you said several things, but I'm just, um, I'm wondering what your answer would be today. Um, if it would, I wonder if it would be any different. You talked about reviewing the master plan. Um, doing a public property inventory. You also said, I wrote down, I'm not even sure what you meant, to what extent do we want to bolster language? You said that and I don't, I wrote it down and I, I don't remember what you meant.
I don't know what I meant either.
Just wonder what your, uh, what your thoughts are now.
Yeah, so, um. I, I would say yes to, to all of those things and, uh, you know, I think as we've been able to take stock of the work that has been done over the last three years. The biggest need in the market right now, um, a- as, as has been, but I think has been more than proven out in the work that we've done. Um, is support for families earning less than 50% of the area median income. Um, and there aren't great ways to build new buildings that support those families. And so what we've got to think about as a community, and this is not just City of Holland, this is, um, probably the entire county. Needs to start to think about what kind of revenue source might there be to support those families over the long term, right? How do we ensure that we don't have 31% of our population that's spending 30 or 40 or 50% of their income on housing? Um, other communities, Kalamazoo County, um, has, has gone this route. Um, Ann Arbor and Washtenaw County has gone a, a similar route. Where they start to look at other sources of, of public investment that can support those families. Um, because what we've shown is we can build the housing. Um, but that housing can't be built inexpensively enough and still satisfy the community's demands for quality. In order to satisfy the financial needs of the number of families out there. Uh, and, and the one other thing I'll, I'll say that I'm a little bit hopeful about. Um, is a longer-term adjustment to, uh, wages over time. We've seen significant wage stagnation over the last 30 years. At the same time, we've seen an extraordinary, um, increase in housing costs, roughly 30% housing cost increase over the last 10 years. Um, whereas folks making less than $20 an hour really haven't seen any change in their income over that same period of time. Um, and so as incomes begin to rise, um, those families again will be more able to afford housing.
Do you think that, um, the Housing Commission is a place where that conversation could happen regionally? Like, is that? Is that where we would start to join that? I mean, how would that, how do you see that happening?
Yeah, I think the Housing Commission is, is best equipped. Um, and for, uh, I know Lynn and Nathan. Um, have been plugged into that a little bit, but for, for those who haven't, um, attended a meeting in the past. Um, the Housing Commission is really beginning to take over. Um, a fair amount of the work that Housing Next initially was set up to do, that data collection, that understanding of. What's the market doing? What tools do we have and what tools do we need? Um, and there are several members of the Housing Commission that are being very proactive about pursuing new tools. Um, and so it was as a result of the, the creation of the Housing Commission that Ottawa County became eligible for more Housing Choice vouchers. Which will be critical going forward. Um, and we're also beginning to explore what are other communities doing well. Um, that are similar to Ottawa County and how do we learn from those communities to, to improve best practices here? So yeah, Lynn, I, I think the, the County Housing Commission is the best place to begin that conversation. Um, and ultimately we're going to want to have a lot of communication between this body and our township boards. Um, and create a feedback loop between the Housing Commission and those groups. Um, and then, uh, just as, as Quincy was mentioning earlier. How do we coordinate all of that with the other service systems in the community, whether it's transportation or it's Lake Shore Non-Profit Alliance? Um, there are, are lots of other supports that we can be better aligning over time. So Patrick Sisler is going to be our best friend going forward too.
Any other questions for Ryan or Mark?
Yes, but this isn't the place. We could go on for a long time.
All right.
I just, yeah, I just wanted to ask a good kind of specific question about that, the condos that you were talking about. I, I've, I feel like I, I have, well, I have a friend in Boston and I believe she was living in a single-family home. Well, it was originally a single-family. It was broken up into two units and they were condoized. Is that, is that kind of what you're talking about?
In some instances, yeah. You know, I, I think there are, are certain circumstances when done well. That works really well, right? I mean, we, we've got, um, some houses i- in the community that are 3,000 square feet. Um, and may not see, uh, a family that's large enough that wants to occupy it. Um, and so creating an opportunity for somebody to say, you know what? This is a beautiful old house. It's got extraordinary woodwork. Um, we want to preserve all of that, um, but we want to preserve it for two families to own instead of one. Um, that happens. Um, it requires the appropriate legal structure to make it work. Um, and they've got to work out between themselves how they're going to maintain the exterior and the roof. Um, but it's no different than a traditional condominium structure.
Okay.
Yeah, Lynn, I, I've put those together in my law practice. I put those together 10, 15 years ago already. In the, for homes in this area. So it's not, it's, it's not common, but it's not that unusual either.
So they were two units, not just, just not just joint-owned, they were actually two units and then.
Two completely separate units, yeah. And, and each owned individually and as Ryan said. We work out, we, we work out a plan in regard to maintenance of the exterior and how utilities are going to be dealt with, but yeah, that's a, that's something that's very possible.
Interesting.
Yeah, Ryan and then Scott, or I'm sorry, Raul and then Scott.
All right. Yeah, just that, well, a few comments, but, uh, first a question. I, I know you mentioned that one of the potential solutions or at least things that we can look forward to of, of what's next or what we can do is, is with the voucher, uh, piece. But what are the qualifications for somebody to get one of the vouchers? Cause I know it, it has been difficult. I mean, I've been in that, in that world with, uh, in working with Good Samaritan. And so I know that there's a long list, right? And those that finally get them, I mean, it's, it's tough to even find a place. So if that were to expand and more of those vouchers were to become available, like what does that actually mean? Right? Numbers-wise, what are, like, what does it take to qualify for those? Uh, yeah, income-wise.
Yeah, so the vouchers are available to households who are earning 30% area median income or below. Um, so there's a, there's an income cap. Um, and when you earn more than that, right, then you, you fall off of the, the threshold, right? So that's a little bit of a problem. Um, however, what I would say is, um, i- if we've got. Certain number of thousands of families that technically qualify but can't get access to a voucher today. Um, if that program is fully funded, um, it creates a, a much broader scale of. If that program is fully funded, it creates a much broader scale of availability for particular families who can then gain access to housing, which reduces the competition for other folks. So there's an opportunity there, which doesn't solve problems for every family, right? For sure, we've got to come up with other mechanisms. But there's an opportunity there to solve for 60% to 120% more families than we're solving for now. And to me, especially with the work that Good Samaritan Ministries does today, to distribute those vouchers and manage the properties associated with them. If they're prepared to increase their capacity in alignment with an increase in funding for the Housing Choice voucher program, that's the best organization I can think of. Frankly, statewide, they are a best-practice leader in the state of Michigan as it relates to supporting the Housing Choice voucher program. Having Good Sam in our backyard to lead that, I think, would be a tremendous benefit to all of us.
Yeah, right on. Yeah, I mean, excellent news. That's, it's exciting to know that that's a, that's a potential and on the horizon at some point in the future, but, but it's still, right, 30% or less. I mean, we're still talking, there's probably a 30, 30 to 50% AMI that's still, I mean, there's, there's nothing, nothing on the books for. I mean, the developments aren't, aren't reaching that population. And so, full disclosure, and this is kind of where my comments come in, right? I mean, I think I've shared this with everyone on council, and so most of you already know this, but I, since August, I've been working with Good, with Lake Shore Habitat. Now, as their homeowner services coach, so very hands-on in the selection process, helping families get into the houses that we're, that we're building. You know, to date, I've not had to recuse myself from any votes, so there's been no conflict there. I'm sure at some point we'll have that. But that's not, that's not have, it's not needed to be part of our conversations yet, or votes or public information. But with that being said, right, I'm working with some of these numbers. I see the families coming in, I see the families that are, that are needing housing. And so just looking at some of the numbers that I have on my desktop for AMI, I mean, we're looking at for a four-person household at 80% for Ottawa County, this is just these last, this current year's figures, right? They're updated in April. It was 66,880. Right, we can assume that that's a family of four with two parents, maybe both of them are working just so that they can, they can, you know, have that level of income. That's $16 an hour, that means they're working a decent factory job. But, but let's say that that's a, a single parent, right, with three kids, they've gone through a divorce. That's $32,000, or $32 an hour that they're needing to earn just to get to that 60, that's at 80%. That's, that's not happening in our community for a lot of families. The $16, $16 an hour is not happening for a lot of families in our community. So when we, when we start looking at families kind of with, with those numbers in mind and start, right, processing people that we know, people that are, that are neighbors, people that we walk past, you know, in the store, in the grocery stores. Like this, this is, this is the issue, like, this is the challenge, and that's that 30% of 50% AMI, that we're just not gonna, like, we're not hitting that. And so we do need to be, I think, I don't know, I mean, I don't know what the solution is for that, but we need to be, I mean, it's not going to happen by happenstance, the market's not going to hit it, and we have to be very intentional about creating that, that space for folks that are in that, in that arena.
Yeah, you're absolutely right, Raul. The one thing I will say is we do have three, 4% low-income housing tax credit projects in the pipeline right now, between Holland Charter Township and the City of Holland. And those 4% tax credit projects will have units that are reserved for households earning 40% AMI, 50% AMI, 60% AMI, up to 80%. So what's going to happen with each of those is they're going to income average to 60% AMI household budget. They're going to set aside as many as they can for 40%, and then balance those out with some 80% units. It's not going to be enough, right? To your point, if they build 180 units, we'll be, we'll be lucky if we get 30 or 40 that are income-targeted, the households earning 40% AMI. So 40 units times three projects, it's still 120 units, and what we need is 1,200 units. So there's still going to be that gap, and that's really why we've got to look back to the Ottawa County Housing Commission and start to think about what are other ways that we can be supporting those families? The other thing that we're working on, and this is just kind of a plug to stay tuned for later this spring, we're partnering with the economics develop, the Economics Department at Grand Valley State University, Dr. Paul Eisley and his team. What they're doing right now is evaluating the opportunity cost to the community as a whole, when households are forced to spend 40 or 50% of their income on housing. So what we already know from the ALIS data is that they're then not able to pay for healthcare, or they're not able to pay for healthy food, or they're not able to pay for transportation, or they're going into debt, right? And so what we don't know is, what is that costing the rest of us? When we have 30,000 families in Ottawa County who are struggling financially and aren't able to keep up on the things that would keep them the healthiest and keep their kids in school and ready to learn, right? What is that costing the community in terms of GDP? So the Economics Department of Grand Valley is looking at that, and later this spring, we expect to have a white paper where we can begin to talk about what are the economic trade-offs that we're making as a community by not investing in making sure that those families are financially sustainable? And hopefully, my hope is that that leads to another conversation about how do we better do that?
I think another, another piece that to me is important, which you, you named already, but affordability, I mean, this has been a word that we've talked about for a long, long time, and a lot of people have different perceptions of what this means, definitions. But I think that the 30% right, being a significant number, not to keep in mind when we're talking about 40, right, the affordability, it's, people should be able to find housing where they're not paying more than 30% to the, right, to the point of the comments that you just made. Because what's at stake when, when they have to pay more than that? And so I think from my perspective, when we're talking about affordability, that's, that's kind of my frame, frame of mind, right? 30% of monthly income going towards housing. Significant challenge, but I think, but it's, it's been exciting to see the work that's gone into this effort through you, through the City of Holland, the way that City Council has stepped into this over the last few years. I'm excited about where things are going, and I think we're doing some very significant work.
Thanks, Raul. Scott?
Yeah, so I just want to remind everybody, this is a study session, so I'm doing a lot of brainstorming here and help us, you know, have some good discourse and discuss some ideas. So kind of a comment that Councilman Raymond made is we have a housing policy, and I like that, and we need to pursue that housing policy, but stemming from what Councilman Garcia has mentioned, and Brian Kappatrick has mentioned, our economic development, what is our economic development policy, and how's that look? And what I mean by that is, right now, we're, we're looking at 150, 180,000 dollars per unit, you mentioned, for an apartment. And, and that costing about 11 to 1,200 dollars a month. And you have to make about $44,000 a year to accomplish that. And so to get that market, that cost down, as you mentioned before, somewhere around the $30,000 a year for, for income, to be able to afford some of the homes that we, that we need for the 40% of the population that we have that are needed, these residents. It seems to me that when we have an economic policy or an economic development policy that we subsidize large companies and corporations who bring in jobs at 15, 18 dollars an hour, it doesn't, it seems like counterproductive for us to do that, because once we do that, we bring in 200 jobs, we have 200 families that need housing, and they're only making $15 an hour, $18 an hour. So I just wonder if we, if these two policies shouldn't go hand-in-hand to say, if we're going to provide subsidies to corporations and businesses, not only in the city of Holland, but regionally? Because other people, you know, other, there's subsidies being provided on a regional level for these companies to come in and build. Maybe should they, they should be hand-in-hand. Maybe we should be looking at and saying, if we're going to provide subsidies, there has to be a, a trade-off that we're bringing in good, quality jobs that are paying good money, because every time I hear people talk about, well, we need more apartments for our professional careers, well, the professional careers can afford the 11, 12, $1,300 a month rental, but they can't afford them working and only making 30, 40,000 dollars a year. It's a struggle, as Councilman Garcia has mentioned, a single mother with children. I mean, she has to make much more than that in order to compensate for her, her costs. So I guess I just wonder, is our economic development policy need to go hand-in-hand with our, our housing policy, so we can make sure that we have this balance, that we don't create such an atmosphere where we have this imbalance of housing? Just a question for all of you, I guess, not directed at any one of us, but just as a whole, should we not be talking about that?
I think it's a good question, I know you're not directing that at anyone, Scott, but that's why we run some of those numbers behind the scenes, and Dave's not here tonight, right? But he asks some of those point and questions to our companies. I think most recently, you know, because of the change in the personal property tax law, where, where for those of, those of you that have been around a lot, like, Mike, how many 198s would you approve every meeting 12, 13, 14, 15 years ago, right? It was probably three, four, five a meeting. Now, we probably approve, you know, maybe five or six a year. But I think, Scott, you're asking a good question, kind of the, the, the debate that I'm sure Ryan can kind of smirk about and smile about, too, is, is that you, you pointed out something really good, where it's, it does have to be, that has to be a conversation at a regional scale, right? Because what you don't want to do is, because of all of this is driven by, just like Ryan said, you know, housing is not a City of Holland market, it's, it's a regional market, and it extends quite a ways. That's where businesses is hard, too. So I think Lake Shore Advantage, I think the chambers need to get involved with this, too, where not only do we need that wage escalation, but if, if we really take a look at those economic development policies, if we have some holes in them, it's really important that that's done on a larger scale than just the city.
Yeah, but I think Scott, I think Scott's right, that it's a good question to ask, right? Even if they, even if the, even if the company can't make a change, it's, we never ask that, right? We only ask, how many jobs are you providing? I feel like that, at least that's, that's the report we get, and the, and the, and the tax, and the tax calculation. But I think it would, it would be a really good question to ask if, if the company is thinking about that in terms of a housing wage.
And that's where Dave asks those questions, so we have those data. So most recently, most of the companies that were, that we're talking about and the wages that they're paying, they're, they are in very good territory. Like, I think of like Perrigo and Hudsonville Ice Cream, the most recent ones. They're, they're paying very good wages. But the, but don't discount that, I don't discount the question that Scott just asked, because I think it's an important question.
Yeah, because, well, I think we need to establish that a little bit, if we're going to establish a housing policy and subsidy policy for corporations and businesses, we need to really have that balance, because we don't, certainly don't want to get an imbalance that we're encouraging people to come and live here when we know they can't afford to live here, need a job. Some people need the job. And earlier, we were doing that because people needed work, we needed industry, we needed business. But I think we're doing well in that area, that we can now start to be a little bit more balanced with our approach and how we, I'm very pro-business, but I'm just saying, we all have to think about the impacts of when, when one action happens, what's the counter reaction to that? So I think we should be really looking at it.
So if that, if getting the Chamber and Lake Shore Advantage is involved, how does that happen? How do we have that, start to have that conversation? I don't know who I'm asking.
When I was on the council a year and a half ago, I asked that, both Ryan Kappatrick and, and of Jennifer Owens, you know, where, where are we with that? How do we know that we're doing the right thing by, I mean, there are a number of these corporations that were saving $17 an hour, and there were 30 jobs. And then there was a couple of jobs that were making over $50,000, you know, the management. And that's great. I mean, even Perrigo is like $17 an hour, whether 17 to $21 an hour. It's still not up to that $44,000 a year mark that someone has to have in order to go for an apartment. So we really got to come up with a balanced approach when we're providing hundreds of thousands of dollars in subsidies that we're hopeful that bring jobs in, right, to help people, but at the same time, if they can't live here, affordable, then, I mean, how, what are we doing? Are we doing them in favor in that regard? So, and it's a big question, because I, I understand there's a competitive market out there, pay people, but we also have to know people have to be afford, be able to afford to move here.
And I think, you know, I'm going to turn most of this to Ryan, I kind of said this earlier, too, I think one of the, one of the great advantages that we have that doesn't, you know, provide the silver bullet to that, Scott, but that we have an organization called Housing Next and an executive director like Ryan that's working that every day, but that on his board are the people that really are part of those conversations and need to be part of those conversations, where it's the Chamber people, it's Jennifer Owens. Because I think, Scott, I think those conversations, and I don't want to put Ryan in a tough spot, I think they, they, they very much recognize what you just talked about. And then additionally, I think we had a really nice ecosystem conversation today, so that when the county talks about possibly, and I think Ryan didn't use this term, but like a housing trust approach of at the entire county scale, I think that's where those conversations are happening, and while we're part of that here at the city, probably most of those things aren't going to, they're not going to be solved at our scale. But we're important partners in that conversation. Ryan, do I probably have that about, about right without putting you in a tough spot?
Yeah, no, it doesn't put me in a tough spot at all. You know, we, we can turn around and put some of my board members in a tough spot, but it doesn't put me there. And we knew coming into this that wages were a contributing factor, right? That there was, there were these underlying issues that housing affordability and the lack of supply were symptoms of these bigger issues. But we didn't have, we didn't have the, the local evidence or the time to wait around and debate, you know, how do we increase the minimum wage at the, like, county level, because that wasn't going to happen. And so we had to get supply in the works, we had to start working on housing supply and policy around housing supply. But I think, when, and I appreciate having to have gone through the exercise of putting the presentation together for you all tonight, because it really provides some, some stark relief to what we've been able to do, which I think is pretty significant, and, and really depended on the support of boards like you all, and staff like Mark and Keith and Matt. But what we've done so far is only satisfying two-thirds of the problem. And so that other third requires other solutions, and it's a great opportunity for me to go back and tell this story to my board, and frankly, most of my board, board members have boards of their own. We've got to go back and tell this story and start to talk about wages, and to start to talk about other funding resources that are going to be necessary. If, if, if solving for this housing problem is truly a priority for the community, now we have the data and we have the evidence in the community that we can solve for so much in, in the ways that we set out to do from the beginning, and, and we've proven that. And then there's another slice that we've got to tackle differently. And Scott, I think you're making a very, very good point, and I completely agree with Keith, that if, if we set up, or if we were to recommend in some way a minimum wage at the city level, there's nothing to stop those employers from saying, okay, you know, where's the township boundary again? And just look for property there. It's got to be a regional or a county-wide approach. And frankly, you know, when we get into economics and we start to talk about what is the region, then we start to have conversations about, okay, you know, Lake Shore Advantage is on board, is the right place on board? Because there's competition back and forth and mutuality between Kent and Ottawa Counties, too.
So is this helpful, everyone? Oh, yeah.
Yeah, really great.
This is the first half, can you go over it again, please?
Well, there's a good thing, we can do a private showing for you, Scott, but it is live on YouTube, so you can go back. That was, that was good, that was good. All right, any other questions? Great, thank you, Ryan, thanks, Mark, Keith, Matt. 6:40, we got other business, any other business we need? Six forty, we got other business, any other business we need to deal with? So you know what, I did get a text, I kind of referenced it earlier, and I don't have a lot of detailed information, and quite frankly, I'm going to ask you to kind of hold this because it's less our news in some way. But, um, we were approached by the Ottawa County Health Department. And and Commissioner Zouster talked earlier about a site in Holland of doing vaccinations. But the, the Health Department, in fact, they walked through the Civic Center this afternoon with Mr. Van Dyken. And they're really interested in, and actually they're pursuing the ability to use the Civic Center for a vaccination site. And it looks like, um, kind of, stay tuned for more information, we really want the Health Department to be the entity that communicates that out. So kind of stay tuned on that, right? And it's going to be, they're going to take the lead on that and all those types of things. But it looks like, uh, something's going to come together here real quick. And, you know, I, I think we all look at that and the, the, the space that we're in right now as a world, right? To be able to use that, that, uh, our space for that purpose, I, I think makes a ton of sense, and, and we could be proud of, of being able to use that resource. So I know I don't have much information for you on that, but I didn't want you to be caught by surprise by that either, so very much active in process, um, but I think, I think you might be hearing something from the Health Department soon on that. And as I get more information, I'll, I'll definitely share it with you, but again, you know, the Health Department will be taking the lead on everything there. Great, anything else, Keith? I think that's enough, this went longer than expected, and I know that's always my fault, so, um, I'll stop talking now.
No, it was a really good discussion, I'm glad we, I'm glad we, you know, went on as long as it needed to, yeah.
I'm joking. All right, anything from anyone else, otherwise, uh, we can head home. Looks great, we do not need a motion to adjourn because it's a study session, so thank you, everyone. And again, thanks, Ryan, thanks, Mark, for the great presentation, and we'll see you guys all next week.